This meeting is being recorded.
Well, new voice.
I just want to say good evening and welcome to today's work session. Today is Monday, January the 24th, 2022. The time is now 5:01 PM. The work session will now come to order. We have a few items to discuss tonight. Item one is a Main Street overview and goals for the Main Street organization. And we have in this particular discussion, I guess Tracy Stoffel and Gail Langley supposed to be on there too. And then Tricia from DOLA. Item two is discussion of sale of municipal property. And item three is the discussion of use of the Arc of Funds. So let's go ahead and get started with the Main Street overview and goals. Mr. Ball, do you want to get the lead on that?
Yeah, I believe we have both Tracy Stoffel and somebody's even sharing their screen already. Awesome. And Gail Langley. So I would turn it over to one of those two start. I see sort of Main Street board members in the audience. Many for being here.
Thank you.
So Tracy or Gail?
Tracy, are you, do you have the ability to share your screen?
Oh, I've actually been, hello everyone. I've actually been chatting with Audra, I think it is, to try to get the ability to share my screen. I think she's sharing her screen. Audra, I think what you can do is in participants, if you hover over, I'm actually currently listed as DOLA, D L G. If you hover over and it says more, I think that's where you can make me a co-host to make it possible for me to share my screen. And if not, we can certainly do this without showing the presentation if needed.
Yes. I also wanted to mention that the other two Main Street staff, Larry Lucas and Will Kundiff, were planning on attending. I don't know if they're in a waiting room or if you can look at that and see if you can let them in.
Okay, so this is Audra, this is Donna. So first of all, I'm providing the key release tonight. So let's see. Gail, what is it? No. If over the bottom of your screen when you have Zoom open, if you open the list of participants, I think off to the right, if you hover over DOLA, D L G. Oh, Larry. It's on the left. Yep, there we go. So I can introduce you a host? Yep, that's exactly it. You can say "host." Okay, cool, thank you. Oh, and look, and then I can meet my other colleagues. And that's all because I'm a host. So now Jay is in your court, I guess. Okay, excellent. Well, here we go. I will go ahead and share my screen now. Thank you.
I was going to say if a couple of you board members want to move your chairs over.
Sure.
That would be awesome. I don't want to be in your way.
It's all fun to move over here.
While we're here, you just mentioned that City Manager, myself, and Naaman and Aaron Lobutry had an opportunity to actually have dinner with Gail Langley last Thursday, Wednesday night. So we had a good conversation.
That's awesome. I hope we can all get on the same page with it all from this presentation.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for that. Who's in the audience? Can I ask that? Because everybody looks like these really tiny, teeny people.
Why don't we go let you guys, the Main Street board?
Hey, Gail. So I'm here, Jay's here.
Hi.
Kim is here, Talitha's here.
Hi, Gail.
Tom's here, Sky's here. And all the people, and Ben. And then all the people that you can see up at the... Can you see everybody?
Well, we're looking at, I think, the city council. We're not looking at the audience. But thank you for just letting me know. You guys, Main Street has always shows up. I'm telling you, this is the community at work and at large. This is just amazing. So I am so thrilled here tonight, you guys, to be able to introduce the entire Main Street team. We all wanted to connect with you. It's been before COVID, when the world has just been spinning on a dime and things have really changed. But I'm Gail Langley. I've been at DOLA over four and a half years. And I am so honored and privileged to work with these members of my team. And I really come to DOLA with no government experience until I got here. But I was actually a Main Street manager in Granby, Colorado. And the Main Street program changed the way I did business, starting anew with the Chamber of Commerce when we were reinventing ourselves. And it was an approach. It was a philosophy. And it was a way to bring the business, the town, and the community all together. So I've lived it, I've breathed it. I know it works. And that's why I'm so passionate about it. Or I certainly never would have moved from beautiful mountain town to Denver. But I'm really honored to be here. With that, I'll turn it over to Larry.
Hi, everybody. My name's Larry Lucas. I'm a licensed architect and I serve as the Historic Preservation Architect for the program. As you know, Main Street is deep in historic preservation. It's actually a combination of preservation and economic development, and the two make each other work. I've been at DOLA about four years now. Prior to being with DOLA, I was with the Oklahoma Main Street Program for seven years in the same role. So I've got a lot of experience traveling, meeting with property owners and officials like yourself. Always open to come and help. Just let us know. Tracy?
Hi, everyone. Tracy Stoffel. I'm the Main Street Specialist here at DOLA. I've been here almost three years now. Prior to this, I was with the Colorado Municipal League for 13 years. And before that, I was with the statewide historic preservation nonprofit, Colorado Preservation Inc., for five years. So I've just gotten to be around the Main Street program for a number of years now. Just thrilled to be a part of it and be helping our communities a little bit more directly.
Everyone, I'm Will Kundiff. I'm the grants financial administrator for the Main Street team. I've been with DOLA for just a little over a year now and was helping out with some disaster recovery funding and then have moved over to help the Main Street team in particular with the Main Street Open for Business Grants. Prior to working with DOLA, I was with Downtown Colorado for about four years, helping run their American Vista program and other community development projects.
So this is your lead main team afar. And while Tracy's going to the next slide, I'm just going to say we're only doing slides because we can't be there in person just for some visual interest. We do have about 20 minutes planned to go through a few things. A couple of basics about the program and then a little bit about what we do in the Main Street four-point approach, which I've known you've seen, but it's been a while. And then a little bit about return on investment and some actual leveraging of funds that we've seen from our Main Street communities that are at the candidate level for the most part like you. Does that fit with your schedule for your work session?
Sure.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Would this...
No, and you can stop us at any time and ask questions, please. This is a conversation.
Okay. Will the slide presentation be available for us after?
Absolutely.
Okay. Because I didn't get all the contact information.
Oh, no, you don't have to write it down. We'll send it out to Penny and Mike and maybe Victor. And they can make sure all of you have that for background reference. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Gail.
Sure. I'm just making a note of everyone. I'm going to make sure I send it to you. Okay. And like you said, we're just going to do kind of a quick refresher for you all. I'm sure you're all very familiar with the Main Street movement. But it did start back in the 1980 year cycle with National Trust for Historic Preservation. So it's a philosophy towards economic development, community development, firmly grounded in preservation, which is kind of perfect if you ask me for Trinidad. There are more than 1,000 communities nationwide that are part of this movement. In Colorado, there are 22 official communities that we work with throughout the state. So that's where, you know, the bulk of the floor of our focus goes, is supporting these 22 communities. And as you all know, we are housed within the Department of Local Affairs here in Colorado, which I think is a great location for it. Other places, it's economic development or preservation. Because we have the Department of Local Affairs here in Colorado, it's just, it really puts that focus on what our communities want, supporting our communities along the entire four-point spectrum without giving any particular emphasis and leaving that within the community. Right here are the four points of the program. It's grounded in organization, which is basically making sure the right people are in the room, having that contact person, having, you know, just the groundwork in place in order to accomplish what the community's vision for its downtown is. Design, as I mentioned, it's grounded in historic preservation, which, you know, history, you have space down there in Trinidad. It's a gorgeous town. It's everything physical about the downtown. Whether that's benches, bammers, pocket parks, just everything that gives... Putting the emphasis on what makes Trinidad a special place to be different from every other community anywhere. I mean, Trinidad really is amazing. Again, it's all about economic vitality. That's supporting the businesses that you have and attracting businesses to your community and making sure that you just have that thriving downtown. Frequently, that means, you know, promotion and activity that's events. It's the fabulous job that you all did with supporting your businesses throughout the pandemic and the live events, the streaming events that you had to make sure that your businesses felt supported throughout the difficult past few years and helping moving forward.
Tracy, this is Mayor Rico. And I just, could you tell everybody here what the mission of Main Street is? I think that's a good starting point for everyone to get an understanding. That's where you're going with your presentation as well.
Sure, I'm going to add a little to this. The mission of the statewide Main Street program is to support community-led economic development across the state. So it's really supporting that local vision, you know, local control is such a big foundation of Colorado's local government. And that's what we're here for. That local vision of what the community wants to make their downtowns vibrant places for businesses, for their residents to enjoy their downtown. And then so what we do here is support that local vision. Gail mentioned her experience running a program in Granby, which is done very differently than it's done in Trinidad with the Chamber, and that's great. We don't tell people how to run their programs. It can be housed in different locations. Very frequently, it's municipalities here in Colorado. Then, you know, I obviously come a little bit with that broader municipal perspective as well as the preservation perspective and a nonprofit aspect of it. Larry brings, and he'll talk a little bit about the support that he does with design work and preservation. And Will's great experience with Downtown Colorado Inc., but also with grant management and assisting communities in that area. And so I think, I think just kind of, again, ad-libbing it, we support community-driven preservation and the visions that you have, that you all have for your communities. And we just see how we can support with our knowledge, our knowledge of the state's own, other nonprofits, and how it all, you know, statewide nonprofits and grants, and how we can plug in and guide with technical assistance what you want for your downtown. Mary, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, just real quick here because, you know, this program is not just about the small grants and scholarships that you can see on this slide. It's about what we can do, as Tracy said, to help the Main Street program align with your business community, with Trinidad, your creative community, to come alongside the town and take a look at what is it that your vision is? How do we empower you to do something? And most often, one of the most impactful things that we do is with our consulting services. And you can see that on here. A lot of times before you can go after a grant, you need to have a plan. Sometimes if it's an implementation grant, you need to have construction drawings. We've been doing those types of programs and projects, you know, since before I got here. But throughout the whole COVID pandemic, we've done construction drawings, parking studies, and parking analysis for Ridgeway, Montrose, Windsor, Lake City to help them prepare themselves to go after some of these larger grant opportunities. We have a pool of 43 expert consultants that all align with one of those four points. And you come to us with a need and we work on putting together a really thorough request for proposals. And we put it out to these consultants and we handle all of the administrative burden of this. All you have to do is help us make sure that what you're getting for deliverables meets the goals that you want. And this has actually helped people go for the CDOT Revitalized Main Street Opportunity Two Grant. It's helped people take a look at going for the Opportunity One Grants through CDOT. It sets them up to take a look and talk with their town about how they might want to use ARPA money, which is now just being, the Treasury guidance just came out on the 6th. And people are saying that we have a little bit of money and now that we've got this done, you know, let's, we can do it. You know, I mean, we have a plan. So I know people are always saying, not just plans, we need implementation money. We help you get there. And that is probably the biggest thing that this program offers to folks besides our small mini-grants that you can leverage with other funds, besides Larry and the technical assistance and webinars and education that we do on a monthly basis. So any questions?
Okay, I guess.
Okay, next slide. Might be a playing catch-up here, Tracy. I've not seen it move. There we go.
All right. So for historic preservation work, that's something we do specialize in on the team. The best case scenario for, you know, for meeting with local property owners is that there's a point of contact. A lot of times in the town, Penny's been managing that growth. But, you know, lining up different property owners that would actually benefit from receiving some guidance on what they can do with their building to spruce up their business or to preserve the structure of the property, deal with any problems that are happening with the building. And old buildings have old building problems. But really beyond that, it's working with the town, like you guys. Working on a property at Fox West Theater. We're going to talk about that a little bit more later. But really just working on properties is probably the number one concern that we have to make sure that your physical structure stays well. Beyond that, we can do preservation training. We can, meeting with your board, meeting with the town, meeting with the public at large. That, you know, a variety of trainings on preservation, different kinds of ideas that would be related to economic development. And then, you know, I'm not a landscape architect. Certainly, we do have those consultants on our staff, on our team, like Gail mentioned. But, you know, sometimes I can offer a little bit in the knowledge of streetscaping and conceptual ideas for the downtown, you know, greater than the buildings. Okay, and so this is leading into the Fox West. And this is probably our most exciting project right now with Main Street, at least in my wheelhouse. This is an incredible building. And many of the things at the theater are really groundbreaking. It has an incredible history. As some of you probably know, it's going to be undergoing a full restoration of the original facade that you see on the right, which is very exciting. It'll have that original wrap-and-wrapped brothers design. So when you come into downtown, you're going to be kind of greeted with the architecture that makes the district famous. It's also going to have some operating storefronts for too long on either side of that main entry, which is going to be kind of great to get people on the sidewalk there again. This is all part of work that we've done through two projects. Number one, starting in January last year, this project was selected for a Heritage Energy Pilot Project. It's the only public project that was selected. We have two privately owned projects, one in Leadville, one in Ridgeway. This is the biggest building by far. But we're focusing on those two storefront spaces and the main entry area, really just that lower band of building with the spays. Then came along the summer and we ended up with some money in our lap that we had to spend rather quickly. And we thought, well, there's already a project that's vetted in the kind of work that we're doing with MSOB, the Main Street Open for Business Grant. And that was for facade restoration work and energy efficiency work. And so that's how we're actually supporting the rehabilitation of this grand facade is through a $250,000 grant through DOLA that, you know, was only made possible because we had this Heritage Energy project. And so things tend to like add up sometimes. And one thing will leverage on another. But with this building, it is just delightful that we can actually help make such a big step in downtown's recovery and revisioning of downtown Trinidad. So I'm so blessed to be a part of it and I just can't wait to see what construction starts.
Well, I threw this slide in because this is how much money you guys have been awarded in the recent few, you know, the recent past. And this is a lot. And I wanted to just commend you for your efforts in having different groups work with different organizations. You got three Colorado Creative Industry awards as well as the CDOT award and then your MSOB award, like Larry was saying. But another power of Main Street that I would be neglected if I didn't say it is Main Street sits on the committee for CDOT, the creatives, and MSOB. And people know if you are in the Main Street program that you have a level of organization and a level of credibility that puts you kind of above some other communities that may not be on their radar. So if you're in Main Street, it is a designation that means something. And it is taken quite seriously as people are looking through grant awards. And they know that you're all working collaboratively with the town, however your organization is structured, with your business community and with your community at large. So I really wanted to share that because there is power in Main Street and there is power with the people that are sitting in that room here tonight. So people always ask, well, what's the value of Main Street? What's the ROI? Well, during COVID, I actually used some Capstone students to help me take the mammoth amount of data that we collect and our Main Street programs provide to us in terms of full and part-time businesses, volunteer hours, events, and estimated event attendance. And then looking at where we could get the data, where tax data was available and taking a very small percentage of that that's attributable to Main Street. And if you look at the bottom line here on return on investment, and I wasn't going to go details about how this was calculated. You know, you'd be hard-pressed to find other projects that could give you a 20 to 1 ROI. And the one thing that is really noticeable on this particular slide is you can see the definite impact of COVID, which happened in 2020. And that's just a huge reduction in tourism dollars.
Gail, can I interrupt for one second? I'm not sure if...
Absolutely.
Can we expand that a little bit? Because for us blind people, we're a little far away. I don't know if that can be expanded a little bit.
That's why they make these.
Oh, you mean, if you make it bigger?
Yes.
Well, I'm kind of the old, old-school tone. Phil, my eyes are old, yes. And you will get this, as we promised afterwards. But yeah, sometimes it is rather hard to see.
Thank you.
I can't see the whole screen on this one. But anyway, I guess the moral of this, without belaboring it, and we could get into the details about how this was calculated, is from my heart and from my experience from the last 11 years of my life, this program works. And I've seen these kind of numbers in Granby and in other communities that are really embracing the program and making it work collectively, partnering with the town. So after this particular slide, we're just going to show you some great pictures. If you still have time, and I think we are at our, ooh, we're at 22 minutes in. If you still can bear with us for a few minutes, we're just going to show you how this line has worked in other communities that are similar to yours. Is that okay? You guys are too quiet.
There are parts of Pollin that, if I try to zoom in, you would just kind of lose that left panel which puts the numbers into context. So I think, Gail, we'll just make sure that we share this here and Gail has all of the data to back up her for questions when you're saving copy of the PowerPoint.
Hundreds of pages of data.
Tracy, can you just put it in slideshow format rather than seeing all the top of your screen? If you could just put it in slideshow, that might work better.
I just, I lose the rest of my screen when it happens. But yeah, I'm happy to share. Hopefully, this is better.
It is.
It'll bring her. Yeah.
And I'm sure you might have some questions on this. And this was a seven-month project. And, you know, if somebody could actually pull holes in a lot of things and I could justify how those numbers were calculated and happy to do so if you ever want to do that. I wasn't going to do that tonight, you know, for sake of time. Larry, you want, let's just jump into Wellhun. And I think Will was going to just show some of the results in these past couple of years. Take it away, Will.
Yeah, sure. I think, well, I mean, Wellhun's done a lot of work over the past few years and leveraged almost $2 million in funding from various sources. I might need help on many of some of these buildings. But that tree in the middle, that's part of the wishing tree, which is at their Leadville Park, which is, they just got new this year and they used a CDOT Revitalizing Main Street Grant for that park wishing tree as well as a bike share program as well.
So up in Leadville, there's been some similar leveraging. We've actually assisted property owners in restoring the Goldie Borough Cafe this last year. And they're getting some, not only on the National Register, but they're going to be getting some federal and state historic tax credits for this project. The building to the right of that is actually the Heritage Energy Project that's in Leadville. It's currently undergoing restoration. And you can see that they've actually rehabbed those bricks and it looks like brand new. And then other than that, there are things that are elements on the street. The flower boxes were paid for through our mini-grant program with the program. And then the charging station was through the state's energy vehicles program that they charge at it. Then up in Central City, there's a lot of work going on. I was actually up there a couple of days ago to look at two MSOB projects. Besides some of the work of MSOB, the Belvedere Theater, which is undergoing a complete revitalization. The city owns it now. Got a $1 million DOLA grant not too long ago. And then also Main Street, we helped with the design and implementation through some CDOT Revitalizing Main Street funding, the new pocket park on the side of the Belvedere that's just really a showstopper. So we do have a variety of different kinds of things.
And then this is our last slide, I promise. And this is, this is Rangeley. You know, they are a fairly new community to the program. And I do want to add, every time that we have said that, you know, this was a CDOT grant, staff has worked with them on submitting their grant application and reviewed it and had comments as well as having a seat at the table to score it and be your advocate, which we do. But Rangeley got three grants. One of them here is for the park, which kind of serves the entire community, but it sits right, you know, adjacent to a senior center. And they do have a little bit of an older population in the above 60 box. So this has been a huge new amenity in their downtown. And then a second park in the middle where they actually spruced up an area that just wasn't very attractive and improved their biking and walking trails wasn't very attractive and improved their biking and walking trails and put in a bike station and some park benches. And this was all during COVID to help people get outside and feel safe. And then I had to throw in the logo on the right, because we helped all of our communities with branding and messaging and identification. And this was the logo that our Pickaxe Project developed for them after they started into the program, and it's really taken root, and it kind of really threads, no pun intended, threads and treads into their identity and their outdoor recreation and their economic development initiatives. So I thought pictures sometimes speak more than words. So that's our presentation, and I, we're willing, if you have time, to take any kind of questions, and maybe we stop sharing.
What we'll do here is, you know, we have our board members, you guys are the ones that have the most interest in La Jolla, so I think if you have any questions to share with them or any questions you have for them, is this something that you guys--
This is a surprise to us. We already know that this is what we're doing. But the thing is, it's so much bigger than our board can handle, because we're all volunteers, that we just need, like, there's lots of reporting, that spreadsheet that she showed, that's because you have to give quarterly report of, you know, the sales tax, businesses open, businesses closed, how many buildings were sold, and how many, you know, what the prices were. So there's a lot of administrative work, which is not necessarily conducive to volunteers. Because we don't, I mean, I'm just not trained for it, but anyway, so that's what we're hoping back.
And I know that that's a discussion that we've had, getting the directors, Mr. Valentine, if you'd like to comment on where that particular part of the discussion is.
Sure. Internally, we've been discussing not only the Main Street, but the Creative District needing someone. I agree with Penny that it probably should be a staff person that is kind of dedicated, maybe not full-time, but we're trying to figure out how we can give them the help to help them even succeed more with a staff person. We did not budget for it this year, but we found some money from another program that closed out and there was leftover, so we're working toward creating a job description and see how it fits under which department and how we move forward, so. Yes, would that be--
Yay! Woo! Would that be--
Would it be a full-time position or a part-time position?
We're trying to figure that out, whether this person will wear two hats, like Creative District and Main Street. It might be, it might not work, but at least a part-time position with somebody in a city who has capacity, which is a tough one as well. So we're moving forward with that.
And I do know that, you know, we're going to have that discussion later on on the ARPA funds, and I read through that information that, you know, last night, and, you know, there is pretty openness to be able to put the use of the funds. So that funding that you were talking about, together with the ARPA funds, maybe we can find, fund that for maybe two or three years possibly, because the funding for these ARPA funds go up to 26, so that would be something that we can look at. So is that something that you guys were wishing to hear?
Yes, to hear. Yes. I'm assuming that we could do so much more, that we got somebody to get the administrative part done, then we come up with ideas and excitement, and they can get her done.
And Penny said that she gets emails a lot for grants, and by the time she weeds through them, oh my goodness, the grant application date is out, we've expired it. And this will give us an opportunity to have somebody that, A, is watching for those, and B, can get them completed in a timely manner that we don't have the capacity to do.
And just bringing money, and money, bringing money into the city is bringing economic vitality, and it's just good for everybody, bringing sales tax.
Mike, we do have our grant writer back, is that correct? So that person in conjunction with Tawitha will be able to monitor all of those grant possibilities that come down.
Right. And should I email Gail about the CDOT Revitalizing Main Street grant application?
Absolutely, if you want me to take a look at it, you bet.
Great. Perfect.
You know, in that discussion that we had with Gail the other night, she said that she is really willing to help you to make sure that everything is in the proper form and the language and stuff--
Yeah, great.
--so that we have, you guys have a higher success rate. So that's really important.
Great.
Yeah, let's go ahead and see if we have any questions now from council, Mr. Debal.
Now, in all your years of experience, ma'am, how successful has the Main Street program been in uniting economic redevelopment and historic preservation to rebuild a lot of the towns that you're speaking about?
Oh, I think it's been extremely successful. The thing that's always probably the hardest is it takes time. You know, some of these historic buildings require a lot of work, like the Taylor Opera House, which has been in the process of being rehabilitated for, I don't know, Larry, five, six, seven, eight years, with various fundraising efforts. So with some of the historic buildings, you got to look at the long game and say, okay, some of these buildings can be rehabilitated in a year or two, and we help you find that implementation money. But I'm telling you, Central City is starting to make a really good comeback. And I look at Central City's building stock, La Jolla, and Trinidad is having some similarities in the picture, because of your history and heritage with mining. But I know for a fact it works, and I don't know if I answered that question, but I do, it works. I think it probably has more from the historic preservation perspective.
Well, all I was going to say is a little bit, you know, it's kind of one of those things, like almost anything, right? The more you put into it, the more you get out of it. And so I think it's great that you're going to be looking at investing and having, you know, a staff member who can concentrate on doing this, because some of those examples, you know, we gave you, I don't think any of the staff are full-time in those examples, or they might be full-time staff, but Main Street is only a part of the jobs. And so you can find a job where it aligns with existing work. I think, you know, whether that's like La Jolla, it's the economic development, you know, urban renewal person. Up in Central City, I think her position's community development professional. Out in Rangeley, I think it's the marketing and communications person. But it's a way that's helping them align their work and their vision. And I think as Gail mentioned, with what she did in Granby, you know, she was also a chamber director there, but where it's kind of, it's a way that it structures work that you're already doing and contributes to, you know, a position and just kind of a way to organize your thoughts. And so again, I think that, you know, the more you put into it, not necessarily money wise or anything, but just, you know, time and energy and having that dedicated staff person, I think the more you will see come out of it.
Yeah, I'm just going to add one more thing, too, with these three other community revitalization grants that you got for the commons and for the school. In two and a half years, your downtown already looks significantly different with the Creative District. You are going to see, I think, more and more investors wanting to come to your downtown because of those other components that are currently underway. When you invest in your downtown, it's catalytic, and that's how we sold the Main Street Open for Business program. It was like, we're going to invest a little bit of money, and we did, in 16 communities, and we're already seeing some of the people that weren't wanted, or some of the people that were wanting to invest more, because they're now excited about the possibilities and opportunities for a brighter future, and we all could use that right now.
Ms. Gray, what's your--
Hi, Gail. Hi, Tracy. This is Karen Grapo, I'm on council, and I'm the liaison for the historic Main Street Board. So my question is, so what is, our first step is getting a staff person, but some of those consultation monies that you have out there and training monies you have out there, would those be available to train our staff person?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we have, the 2,200 in scholarships, we do require a statewide, the manager to attend the statewide manager summit that we have, and Penny has been doing that in her volunteer capacity. And so that would be the paid person would be coming in at that place. And some people do send, a couple of people, but it really is intended for the main point of contact for that. And then we do require someone to attend the National Now Conference each spring that's coming up here in May in Richmond, Virginia. And that can be the manager and/or a board member that attends that. But any remaining funds can be used for additional training as well. Those are just the two required trainings. And then on top of it, we're always here, and we offer monthly trainings, and, you know, we do Main Street manager orientation for any time around somebody brings on a new manager. But we're, I mean, that's our jobs, is to support our managers and their boards. That's what we do as a job, is support these people in their jobs. And so we're always just the phone caller in the middle.
And these guys--
Well, I'd also be ridiculous if I didn't say that Larry, with his expertise and working with the Street Colorado and SHT, I think you do typically, Larry, about three deeper-dine trainings every year on historic preservation, plus being on call for one-on-one consultations, because you've done one on staffing, stacking, and leveraging funding, what's we're going to be doing again. Larry, do you want to add to that about some of the other trainings that you've done to help people out?
Sure. Well, really, the trainings that we provide are the trainings that you request or the ones that you need. And sometimes it takes us coming to town, helping you identify that, or just a little bit of a brainstorming session. And really, you know, through the point of contact or the manager, a lot of times we hear things that are happening locally, which is, you know, it's good to know what's happening. And we can get a little bit of the community vibe that way. And, you know, if not enough people really respect or understand preservation, for example, maybe we need a community workshop, and we can do those kinds of things. Say there's a public space that needs work, and, you know, the town's behind it, and maybe we do some kind of a community-led redevelopment project, or a park space, or something like that. It's really, just depends on what you guys need and identify. And if I can't do it, in terms of like the professional service, then we do have people on call, we can fill gaps in pretty much any aspect for downtown. So, you know, I'm confident in saying that, you know, well, first of all, you know, I'd like to offer my services to come and train anyone in historic preservation board, the Main Street Board, or you folks on council, I'd be glad to do that, even just a presentation for the community at large, you know? What do we need to do to start moving the wall forward? Maybe it's a good thing to start thinking on, and then let's get back and forth on contact and figure out what that might look like, because I'd really be glad to do that.
No questions, good?
No, thank you.
No, I don't really have any questions. I think it's a good idea if we get together, Mike, and we're down a program for them. I also think we should have our economic development wally and stuff involved in some of this, too, because that's, Main Street's part of our economic development. So I think we need to really work on that and get somebody going on that. I think it's a good project if we use all the grants and stuff we can get.
Hi, I'm Erin Oboltry, and Gail, it's nice to see you again. I'm sitting here thinking, it excites me, the thought of having someone on staff who is acting as something of a coordinator between all of our boards and commissions. We've been talking about that a lot on council. We have historic preservation, we have arts and culture, we have the Creative District, we have the Space to Create and Overstate Board, we have Parks and Recreation. But each, I served on a couple of those boards before I was on city council, and I remember feeling like, what are we doing? Because you kind of like, you have your own little stuff that you're working on, but you don't feel like you're part of a greater whole. And I think if we could have somebody who is with Main Street, who's kind of corralling all that energy and saying, the whole point of this is economic development, not just historic preservation for the sake of historic preservation, not just arts and cultures for the sake of that, but to push Trinidad forward, I think that would be a really helpful organizing principle.
Goodness, said it better, Erin, that's perfect. And it happens a lot in communities. You have passionate volunteers that are all involved in an organization, giving their time and treasures to it, because that's their interest. But if you can corral and bring all those fractions together so that everybody knows what they're doing, and try to divide and collaborate, you can go forward a lot more efficiently and a lot more effectively.
I appreciate your time tonight. I have no questions, though. Thank you.
The one thing I wanted to say is, you know, Gail, that night that we had dinner, a question came up about admin money. And just to let you know, the next day, that came up. As a matter of fact, I had an opportunity to talk to the DOLA director about admin money, and was asking him if there is a way around to use or to have admin money, and he's, he's in agreement that there may be a possible way. Probably I'll talk to him a little bit more. And what was even more interesting, and it was during the day, there was a senator, I forget who was the senator's name. Michael, who was the senator's name that brought that up? But anyway, there was, one of the senators was there, and he brought up the question about grants and grant money. So I emphasized that to the entire group about grant money, that it's something that needs to be looked at, because admin money, I mean, because we're all facing the same thing. So hopefully, maybe we'll start a conversation somewhere.
Well, no, Phil, I'm glad that you did, because you've got almost $10 million in your lap, and out of all of those grants, the only one that has 5% admin money is our Main Street Open for Business, which we did include, because we were allowed to. But people have to be looking at that. When you're in a small town and you've got two people that are your financial staff, and you've got all this money, it is a huge undertaking. I mean, huge. I mean, I don't feel for them at all at trying to get those grants out the door. They need some help. So maybe, maybe with your voice and other voices around the state, maybe they can make a concession to get your staff some help, because they're going to be weary by the time these grants are done. We want you to spend the money, all of us do. We want you to spend.
It was Senator Rankin who was--
Oh, I figured it was Bob, yeah. Yeah.
So any other questions? From you guys? Gail, Tracy, you guys, thank you for participating in today's work session, and looking forward to, I'm sure these people are looking forward to working with you soon. Okay?
Well, thank you for your time. I know we ran long, but we really do appreciate interacting with you. We want to help you as much as possible, and Godspeed with all the things that you're doing, because you have a lot on your plate.
Thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you, Gail. Thank you. Thank you, Tracy. Mary.
Anything from you guys for council, or that you want to--
No, we're getting ready to do our work plan for 2022, and we have a budget ready, so we're going to hand that in, how that goes. Yeah. That'd be very helpful.
Thank you for the support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, Penny.
Bye, Gail. Bye, Tracy. Bye, Larry.
Bye.
Bye, Will.
Bye, Will.
That's all I got, Will.
Sorry, Will.
That's a master building, but it's a little, you got to mount it a little faster.
Okay, let's move on to the second item on the agenda, which is the discussion of Senate table broadly, and how the--
I believe so. Mayor Johnson was on this issue, and it might be best to, Mike, tee it up, if you don't mind.
Yes, but let me just start the discussion. I know that through the broadband issue, we're talking about an opt-out election for Senate Bill 152. So we didn't budget for an election this year. We're going to, we'll find the money when, that's where we do it. But since we're having an election, we've had several inquiries about some of our city-owned properties, one being the Hughes Lumber Building, a property, the other being our children's museum. We've had people wondering, you know, if we sell that. I'm just saying it, what I heard, I'm not suggesting. But with that said, because these properties were used for municipal uses in the past, state statute, which Les couldn't tell you all about--
state statute, which Les couldn't tell you all about, requires us to go to the, for an election of people to dispose of, to use, you know, pass that property on. So just wanted to open that discussion with council to see if, number one, you're amenable to putting those up, you know, and having a ballot issue to run that for the people. Part of the reason is there's timeframe for any, everything and we have to have certified ballot language for the ballot question by September 9th to the county to put on the ballot. With that, there's a couple of readings. So the ballot content would have to come August 1st, meetings in August, the first and second meetings in August, so that we could certify for September 9th. So that being said, Noah's Ark is currently in the Hughes Lumber Building. I fully expect they may ask for an extension. I know they're looking at options, but in our agreement with them, there was a 12-month timeframe for them to move out of the Noah's Ark, the Hughes Lumber Building, down to the Noah's Ark Building. They're looking at rental spaces and storage spaces because they have a lot of their second-hand store, whatever you want to call it, all their goods are stored there. So that agreement was executed March 2nd, I believe, by them. Right before council, mayor executed on February 2nd and we got their signature March 1st of 2021. So that timeframe is looming. Just wanted to have an open discussion with council on whether we move forward with an election or look at, there's possible, you know, 99-year leases options available also, but I don't know unless.
Well, I think before it was done, I guess the thing is that, I think if council decides to want to try to move forward with this, we could have put it on the ballot, a ballot out there, sort of availability, whether it happens this time around or another time around, but at least that availability would be for us to, you know, dispose of the property probably however it's done. Because if we do it each time it comes up, it's just going to create more havoc. So it might not be a blanket point of purchase or movement down road. I'm not sure.
Well, and if I could please, a couple of points to make, and that is I previously sent to you the statute on point, 3115-714 CRS. And that is a statute that requires that the sale of city property that has been used for municipal purpose go to an election, go to a vote of the people before such property can be disposed of. There was the question, and I'm sorry I didn't get back to you before now, I think it was Council Oboltry who posed the question, of a long-term lease. And a long-term lease, I think would be allowable and would not require a vote of the people. And you could do that if you were so inclined. Wouldn't have to be 99 years in duration, but it could be, we certainly have, you know, historical precedent for that. Anyway, a number of leases are for that time period. So that would be something that could be done. But one question I have, and that, I don't know the answer to this question, but that is if the ballot issue would be simply whether or not the city should dispose of this property or can sell the property, or whether it has to be specifically, you know, the terms, like who the proposed buyer is going to be and for what amount they would be buying it for. So in other words, do you have the RFP first and, you know, whoever appears to be the successful bidder, even though it's all contingent upon a vote of the people, or you simply posed the question, can the city sell the property? And the reason I have that question is just reading from that statute, section 1A, before any such sale is made, the question of said sale and the terms and consideration thereof shall be submitted in a regular or special election and approved in the manner provided for authorization of bonded indebtedness. Anyway, so that is a question, I suppose, for another day. But it does, you know, it does sound like we might even have to have a specific amount in proposed buyer. But in any event, I think it is for council to decide at some point after discussions like this, whether or not you actually want to sell these properties or pursue long-term leases for potential applicants. Does that make sense?
It makes sense.
Okay. Sometimes I wonder if I'm making sense.
Will that benefit the city by the lease, with the lease, Les?
Well, would it benefit the city with the lease? Yes. I mean, it depends on the use, right? It depends on who the city would be leasing it to and what for. And I do think it has to be abundantly clear that it is for a set term that the property would revert back to the city. And that's always anticipated in a lease, but it has to be clear that we are the owners and that is lease language. But anyway, just, so it is clear that we're not disposing the property. Or that it's not like a lease to purchase so that the person who is the tenant is trying to buy the property.
So in all fairness, would it be okay to board with the election so the people can decide?
Well, yes, yes. But I think we would be, you know, posing the question to the voters, can we sell the property? And I think if that's what you want to do, I would just say that we would kind of want to beat that drum. You know what I mean? It's like, we would want to have a good reason why, and I know like Mike said, what is precipitating this conversation is having people coming forward for these properties. But yes, rather than just saying, hey, this is kind of on our minds, what do you think? I don't think the voters would ever approve that.
Do we have to be specific in this particular case? We're talking about two properties? Would it be two different ballot questions?
Yes.
Would it be a front row for both?
Right.
I threw the other one out there, but you know, that's the other nifty.
Right. Right, right.
Those are two, yeah. These four these properties.
Right, exactly. It would be two separate ballot questions if you decided that you wanted to sell those properties. Any additions?
Is there any advantage lease versus sale? Taxation, well, obviously money, because we get the money. But is there any advantage? You can say one for the other?
If I could please, just so you know, and I'm sure that Mike wants to weigh in on this as well, but usually these lease agreements we do for like a nominal amount, right? And we're not getting rent. It's someone like, you know, the Fox or it's, you know, or Noah's Ark. And it's things like that where we want them there, we're doing what we're doing for the benefit of the city. It's things like that. So that is still though for a quasi municipal purpose, right? So it's hard to make a case for, well, I should have thought that through, but if you were wanting to keep the property in a half a long-term lease, then you would want, if you do that, if you're not going to charge, you know, the rent that you could otherwise committed on the open market, you'd want it to be obviously for what a quasi municipal purpose. It's hard for us to think of anything else that is like that.
I would add that in a lease situation, when you're the owner and the tenant says, hey, this is broken.
Oh, yeah.
You come fix it.
Right.
The building hasn't really had a lot of maintenance for a long time. So that's, that's going to, that's going to be part of it. I guess I could write that into the lease that you are responsible for all this. But the maintenance issue is part of that consideration, I think, that if we sell it and it becomes a viable business and starts contributing and cleaning up the area.
Yeah. You have to consider ADA accessibility.
Exactly. Right, that would be part of it.
The fire department, Captain Baker mentioned one time that they wanted to use the fire department as a museum for the board of Trinidad Fire Department just to remember one. Have they mentioned anything like that?
No, well, when we talked about it.
It was just in passing.
It was, it wasn't in passing, I wouldn't say, but they talked about that and that would be, okay, I don't know if you've been in that in a long time, it is not ADA accessible.
No.
If you're going to create a museum, then we're going to have to open up the doors and the hallways and take out the step that's, I think it's a step made to into the building. So we'd have to build a ramp. There's, there's some issues there. I know that that was, you know, the original jail and town hall. I just mentioned it because that was another property that was used as a municipal.
Coincidentally, my building is right there in the middle of those two buildings. And I see especially the children's museum is really getting rundown. And the Hughes building, even though Noah's are in and out of there every day, I see that being a viable business at one point in time. So for maintenance issues and for the general well-being of the area, I'd say, I think we should, I think it's a good idea.
To sell.
To sell.
Thank you.
I disagree with you. I think we should keep those buildings. Karen's has the fire pots down there and we need a, we just seem to run out of areas that we don't have any storage. And that would be a really good storage area for the city, even for, I think Karen's in this office over here and we're looking for offices and stuff. And that would be a really good place for storage and it has accessible parking and everything. And as far as the deal with the museum, I just kind of agree with Karen about the fire department, putting the deal in there. But even at that, there's grants available to maybe make that a nice place where a museum. I mean, where everybody's looking for property and we have it. I don't know if, you know, if it'd be worth it for us to do away with it because we're always looking for storage areas and stuff like that. I mean, that's my opinion.
Because I can see more, better ideas for revitalizing the downtown than using it built for storage. That's kind of, I, storage buildings can be warehouses that are, you know, just metal buildings. And I think the question that you're posing to us is, what do we think is in the best interest of the city to sell things or to lease them? I don't know if I have enough information at this point to make any kind of comment about that. You know, what are the potential uses that are being discussed? What are the, what are we being offered in terms of pay for them and some money for them? What would, what could we get out of a long-term lease? I don't know the answers to those questions at this point, so I don't really know.
I think one of the questions is, is, you know, if we were to put it up for sale, I think it would, you would have to do like we did the last property is to turn it over to Tura and let them handle that part of it as to.
Can we do that? Is that one of the things that we're considering?
Once it's sold, I think we can do that, we can.
I think would that fit within the statute, Les? If we put the question there that this property would be turned over to whoever the adults.
Ed's listening.
Uh-oh. Ed's listening.
Ed's listening, yeah. That would be one option.
So we would be selling to Tura? Is that how that would function?
Well, disposal. I don't know if it says for sale or disposal.
It doesn't. It says before any such sale is made. I, you know, and it is another question. I mean, I want to say it may seem like we are, you know, like putting the cart before the horse because we're kind of going to saying, you know, do you want to sell? And you like have no idea. I understand that, but I guess anyone who might come forward and try to develop the property is kind of wanting to know if it's an option and if it could be done. Is that, and I mean, before, like you would entertain, and I don't know how that would work either. I mean, if you would entertain proposals, if we would do RFPs, I don't know. But I don't, it seems to me like when you have property that is used for a municipal purpose, it just doesn't seem like it's part of the consideration in the statutory framework that you may sell it to your urban renewal authority for a low amount of money for, you know, for doing what Tura does, which is to sell it, you know, in the context of they dispose of that property. It just seems like this is more of a city selling for private developing purposes, private development purposes. Not saying it's forbidden, but it just doesn't seem like it's contemplated.
Mike, do you know, and I'm sorry if I missed it, the costs of an election?
Ah, I want to, I think it's like 12,000.
I would say like 20. Yeah, I think, but it's.
So does it go higher and higher the more lines we have then or balance?
I think based on ballot questions, yes.
Okay. Then the other question, is there any other, probably be discussing if there were, but is there any other properties that were used for municipal purposes that might be at the same time?
The only other one, if we go for this is, that we can think of is the children's museum.
So I, you know, everyone's comments, I think the extra office space is great, probably even at some level. We seem to have that discussion quite often. And a fire museum, that'd be good too. However, I really think as we grow with the town, I think it'd be super important that we really look towards supporting that growth and contiguous, prosperous and well-presented businesses would be much nicer than like, you know, a nice business, a storage lot and so on and so forth. And then with the fire museum, I think it's just an absolute ton of money and that's not something you'd want to do halfway. You want it to be like super welcoming that tourists come in town. You don't want them to feel like, what was that sort of underwhelming experience? You want to do, you want to do something that's going to cause them to want to come back.
You're being politically correct.
Yeah. That's right. All I mean is that's going to take a lot of money. So, and the last question I had, the, the children's museum building, would that be governed by the historic district and, I mean, they won't be able to change the facade, I would imagine, or, you know? So all those rules that apply, right?
Correct.
In my, I think we should look towards offering as a, you know, put them up for sale, get that all done ahead of time, if that's what I'm understanding, and then present it on the ballot and let them start contributing to Trinidad. That's what I think. That was a lot of words to get there.
My, I think the children's museum is the most difficult to do something with. The other piece of property, I think that today's discussion is pretty much just a beginning discussion. I think we need to put some thought into this. I think we need to put some thought into this, the, um, the direction that we have to take it. I've got some other questions. If they're on the legal side, we'll contact you a little bit shortly on that. But I think that, I think we need to explore it. As far as using it just for storage or whatever, the used buildings, I think that there's other places and utilizing that parcel of property to the utmost and utilizing our assets. I think we need to use our assets, you know, for the, for the best possible use of this community. And that being an asset, I think we just, what's the best use for it? So I think that, I think this is going to require us more consideration and bring it forward again in probably a webinar session. And, but it'll give us some time, at least we know what questions maybe we want to answer in the, in your future.
We have other questions.
We can do that.
So what would our very end drop dead date for us to make a decision would be?
Well, we have to have valid content language by the first meeting in August, so to give staff time to, to put together that, uh, end of June, give us July to, to, you know, really think about it. To add to that, in listening to the discussion, you know, we could do other things. We can do another space to create commons and create our own, own the building and rent spaces out. That's been thrown out, um, that's more staff capacity. Splitting the property where we have the building, we keep the building and, and use the land and let somebody else try and build something or do something there. I lost my train of thought, if there was something else. Oh, maybe in the interim, I'll find out how much an appraisal actually costs so that we see what value we have there. Both, you know, we can do an appraisal, it is as-is and projected if it were, fit into something that, that's going to cost the money that also isn't budgeted for, but, you know, it might be a requested or a quarterly request to maybe get that value. But, and you know, just, you know, there's been discussion about needing additional office space. Now, I think that, you know, we're, we're looking at doing something with the waterworks building. I think that waterworks building has adequate space for additional staffing. The big combined storage, I think it'd be fun to do elsewhere, so.
I was just going to say, and maybe, and I'm, sorry if I'm speaking horribly out of school or, or, you know, jumping the gun, but maybe even having someone who has development ideas come forward and pitch them to you, right? And kind of showing their hand.
The only problem I could see there is that of the timeframe that we're dealing with is that, you know, you do that and we start bringing in development suggestions, it's just going to prolong this and we may miss that deadline, right? If we're going to go forward with the development questions.
Good point.
Well, it's on January 11th.
Right.
We have a few months in there.
Yeah.
And people that could get that information to, if they could.
Yeah.
So even if we put it on the ballot, doesn't mean we have to sell it.
Correct.
I mean, it just allows us to.
Allows us to, but we're not mandated to sell.
Well, I would say too, though, if you're, if the ballot issue is, shall the city, will you vote in favor of the city selling the property for this specific development proposal and purpose and they vote yes, then I think you would, we would be doing that. If the question was, can the city sell this property if a suitable, you know, development project comes along and they vote yes, then you would not have to dispose of it.
I think that would be the way to go is to put it in specified.
Yes.
You run out there, just put a general out there saying it's for economic development for the community. I'd be able to sell, but they have disposed of this property, not, however, I don't take disposal, I think is where the, you have options to, I think.
Right. And let the whirlwind of social media speculation.
Maybe else on this? Like I said, this is going to be part of the discussion, but I think we have some answers that you're going to have. It'll be forthcoming. One other question, I'm sure. Okay. And item three, discussion of use of ARPA funds. And, you know, I'm not sure if all of us have had the opportunity to look through the information that we got over, I guess, the last few days. I took an opportunity last night and read through the 44 pages that were there and picked out the areas that I felt contained to us mostly. And of course, there were several, but it just, you know, the ARPA funds, there's such a wide use of the funds. It's kind of, kind of like, you know, throw it up in the air and, you know, but then as it falls down, there's a little piece, block, distant piece that you've got to abide by. So I think that that's the big question. And of course, American Recom react funds, we received the first half, but the other half is coming, correct? That is correct. We, we received the first tranche, drop, basically a million dollars on Cheryl and said, here you go. And she's, you know, having to deal with, you know, the auditors' questions, what's this money supposed to be for? It's like, because you know, we have to direct these funds. So that's kind of, this is, now that we have the rules and this 44 pages is the, kind of the bridge version, kind of helps through it, there's 400 and some pages of the recovery monies available. And they break down some categories. Replacing lost public sector revenue was the first one. And as you know, we would have, be hard pressed to say that we lost public sector monies. We, we kind of thrived in it a little bit. You know, I projected, oh my God, we're going to, you know, we're going to lose all this sales tax and, and we did better than expected. So that might not be an act option, but there is, there's in several places, the affordable housing mention comes in here. Community development revitalization, hiring above the recipient's pre-pandemic baseline. We may be able to hire our main street coordinator. There's the premium pay. A lot of communities have given their employees, before these final rules came out, given their employees bonuses slash hazard pay. We've had that request from, from our unions, you know, hey, we worked through this.
But that helps online workers.
Uh, not necessarily. Now that you look at this, it's pretty broad, wide open. You can pretty much fit everybody in here that's a, a central employee. There's, we're definitely, as staff, me and Donna have talked about it a little bit, is, you know, our HR, how do we, how do we figure out, you know, who gets what and how much and, you know, where you, where are you in direct contact with people? We've had, you know, utilities, our fire, of course, definitely, they're, they're on ambulance runs. Our police, definitely. Some of our utility workers, mining pilots in homes, turning on utilities, interacting. You know, we, we closed down City Hall for the first portion, then we kind of opened it up and a lot of people come in with appointments. So we're, you know, I, I don't know, but it's part of it. We've had that ask. We're, I, I would be working with Donna to try and figure that out and, and put something before you. But if council is amenable to that, you know, we got that first million, we have another million coming.
Is it one or a little over a million?
What's that?
Is it exactly one million or is it a little over a million?
It's, the overall is 2.1. I don't have that number exactly. It's a, we've, we've got, we've got the first million, we're going to get the second million and some, so we'll have two million. Uh, the deadlines, uh, the final, the final rules take effect on April 1st of 2022. A lot of communities have been doing things and I've been waiting because I don't, they definitely don't want to have any clawback where we spent these funds and then they say, hey, that didn't fit. Now you've got to pay us back. So obligated by, let's see, funds must be used for costs incurred on or before March 3rd, 2021. So that's the start date. The further costs must be obligated by December 31st of 2024 and expended by December 31st of 2026. So we've got some time, but I think we, we have this discussion, I need to get some direction on projects. I know broadband is, is a big one. There's, there's going to be funding for broadband through the state, through the whole American Rescue Plan Act fund for broadband projects. We can use ours, we can leverage it. There's some, there's some stipulations on the broadband and I think we need them all that we have to bring the speeds up to 100.
Hundred over hundred?
Hundred, uh, it's, it's 100 over 20 in here, but I think we can get 100 over 100. I think that's, it does mention 100 over 100 in their, in the language, there's somewhere I can't remember what it means.
Some of that money that we have there is usable for some of the projects that we have going on, like repair the power plant, some of the stuff at the water plant or anything like that. Can we use some of that funding to help with some of that?
There are some water sewer.
Yeah, I seen that in there.
But it doesn't specifically go to the electric. I'm, I'm sure, you know, with, with some questions to, I think Dola has a person in there that we can ask, you know, do these fit?
Because we're doing some stuff at the water plant, right? Filtering with the, changing the filters and stuff?
Uh, that's completed.
Oh, you got that done?
We cleaned, that's, that's kind of a maintenance issue. We had to change the filter beds, the material on the filter beds. That's a, every eight, 10 years ongoing. COVID didn't cause that, you know?
Oh, right. That's, I'm just kind of wondering, because there's a lot of other things in there.
Yeah.
Water storage facilities, aren't we supposed to clean our tanks out?
Yeah, we've got a deengineering going on that. And the water, water is in there. Uh, there's some rules on that. But that's a possibility. We, we had to name those, those things in our yearly report to the Colorado Water Conservation Board. We report that, that yearly, everything that we need to do with water, wastewater and stormwater. So, and, and that's a broad request. We say, you know, we need 100 million for our water system to new transmission lines. So I think, I think we've fit that in there where we can make it work. Yeah, just to be, well, that's what.
I was just going to say, well, I agree, you know, the capital expenditures and, and improvements are important as, as an aging infrastructure for water and sewer. But I've had a lot of people ask me, the residents, business people about their concern about the broadening of, of the broadband, which I think is very imperative, depending on, I guess, affordability and reliability. But I think that's pretty much the main issue. People that I, that call me and talk to me about business owners and even the radio station. But the infrastructure, I don't know. Do we have an aging infrastructure for sewer?
So, as you and me. My dad told me that there was a wooden water line on Highway 12 back in the day.
Yeah, that's been replaced.
Yeah.
Well, there's one thing I learned in my four years being on city council. When you get free money, it's like somebody calling you up and saying, come over and eat. And when you sit at the table, there's a glass of water and we grab 20 people. So in, am I right here? So 2 million sounds like a lot of money, but it really, it's enough to do something, but not something like roads or huge, large infrastructure projects. So.
Goods first.
I, I am, yeah. I am thinking, and this is just my opinion, but COVID has changed the way all of us do business, you know? Life in 2020 to 20, to the present time isn't what it was prior, pre-pandemic. So if anything, I think as far as economic boost to this community, I think broadband would be the way to do it too. Because we're getting younger people like the glass. Young people in here that are working from home, that have jobs that they used to have to stay in a big metro area for, they can come down here and do it. And I think that broadband is going to be as important as any other utility we have. So long story short.
And that's why I brought that up already on, but we can discuss that in a minute.
How much, how much can we get out of, how much can we do broadband?
Well, I got some thoughts there, so when it come around to me, I'll, I'll reach it.
Greg, can you do anything?
No, it's just what happened. The waters were.
What are we hearing from businesses about the lingering effects of, the small businesses, the lingering effects of COVID? I, I know I've heard some complaints from restaurants that they're really suffering, that they've been really suffering this year as opposed to last year. They got some assistance last year. And I'm just wondering if we need to consider that in terms of, are there any that are facing, having to close because of the lack of business due to Omicron or whatever? I just, I'd like to know that because that's part of what these funds were designed to help with as well as to stabilize the incomes for businesses and nonprofits. So I'd like to just know more about that, but otherwise broadband, broadband, broadband.
I, I really feel like, I seem like I'm the odd person out on this, but I feel as we move forward, let me start over. I really agree with Councilman Grego in the sense of like, it is amazing how this really changes your perspective on money. And $2 million, like you said, is not going to go a huge distance for any major projects, roads, sewer, water, infrastructure. And I do think as we move forward, the free market will help even broadband. There's stuff taking place where, you know, fiber optics coming south. Things are going to get better there, I think. I mean, even with, they have Starlink, you can, you can get really pretty high-speed wireless internet connection now. In my opinion, putting $2 million to that infrastructure will not be a lot of bang and buck, that's just my opinion. I'm really interested in the premium pay for people specifically. I mean, it says state, local, or tribal government workforce. Mike, I'm sure there's studies that have been done, but if, if we were to give city employees, I don't know what you'd call it, it says 13. I don't know what you'd call it, it says thirteen dollars per hour. That, that means like, I think that means like thirteen dollars per hour extra or up to thirteen dollars per hour extra, by the way I read it. For a premium payment to exceed twenty-five dollars, is that per annum? I'm not sure. But I'm sure there's studies that show if if you give people in the city a bonus, I mean, for lack of a better word, a bonus, those dollars are spent success, successive times in the city. And that would provide an economic stimulus to our employees, our city. It would, it would be beneficial in a lot of ways. And I'm not saying the whole two million. But I, I think it would be something really worth looking at. If you look, all of us, if we look at our lives at this pandemic, something you've said, we don't live the same life that we do now. I mean, I think, I mean, like, I don't do a lot of the grocery shopping in the home, but man, food, food costs way more. I mean, it, it used to. People haven't got raises to match that. Fuel costs way more. I think it would be, I think it'd be a good use of that money. I, I really do. That's, that's my opinion. I have a lot more to say about it, but for the sake of time, I'll stop there.
Well, you know, I, I think, like, you know, I'm the one that brought up the broadband thing, you know, when this money started evolving. We found out it was gonna be like, you know, total of like two million dollars over pretty, the time frame here. And I mentioned this, that it may not be a bad idea. Let's go ahead and determine. First, I guess we'd backtrack here a little bit. One thing that I had asked and had this discussion is to get a cost analysis. And I think that is something that I think our IT guys are working on. What it's going to cost to build infrastructure on broadband? And then a profile for, let's say, two or three years to see how that will all pay out. Because, you know, we discussed how to, how we would spread that out, going to businesses first, then going possibly to the individual homes and down the road to see, to make, to make sure that it will pay for itself for the person that we have to hire and just in case there's any upgrades that have to get done down the road. So I think if you take, once we find out what that initial cost analysis is going to be, and let's say it's a million dollars, or let's say it's eight hundred thousand dollars. What you do is you take and split that money in half and you use that money for broadband. Now, the other thing is, with the amount of money that's out there, if there's more money needed to, for broadband, it could be leveraged with some money that DOLA has. DOLA has some money. There's also additional money coming for the infrastructure, from the infrastructure bill. So we may be able to find out, once we get this cost analysis upfront, then we'll know what we'll have to, how we'll have to split then dollars. So then it'll leave how much extra money that can go out to, whether it's bonuses or whether it's other, other, other sources out there. So I think that's kind of the, the big thing is that we need to find out what this broadband thing might cost us. So that, that way it's a beginning point. So let's say it's a million dollars, then we have a million dollars to, whether it's bonuses or to give it to businesses or, you know, however we decide to use it, or whether it's water projects or whatever. But a lot of this money can be used to leverage other dollars. So like, let's say you have the water tanks. Let's say what it's gonna cost five hundred thousand dollars. Can we take that money and leverage other funds? So I think it's using it wisely to leverage those dollars is where really this money is, that's where it really comes into play. You know, that's my spiel.
Stick it to, that's right.
That's it.
Any other thoughts? Right. Well, I think we've got some pretty good discussion today. Discussion of other agenda items for the future, Mr. Baller.
No, just, well, with the broadband, that's major topic.
Oh, I just had a, my brain just disconnected. My body, so. But I'd still like to talk about the reports that, remember you're talking about?
I think we've got that down, but I think we should, I'll tell you, look back at all of the various things that have come up and see how we move forward with the discussion items going forward.
Well, when, I'm sorry. It's reconnected for two minutes, just giving. I really would think we as a community need to start thinking about banning plastic bags and.
That's coming down anyway.
It is, but I think we should start.
Well, it starts in twenty twenty-three, doesn't it?
It sounds right, yeah.
And it is an item that we, I have as a work session item, but haven't got time to put together the research to give. I've got that one down.
I'm done. Yeah.
Oh, my, I, I was just kind of thinking that here we lost Rusty on the council. And I, I don't mean it in a bad way, but I don't think any of us really know a lot about the marijuana industry, but Rusty does. He's pretty good friends with all them and that. And I would like to suggest that we talk to Rusty and maybe if he could kind of be our.
Marijuana base?
Yeah, just kind of talk to him, maybe come every, here we go for months and tell us how it's going with them. And should be a species. It might be something that would be.
The problem there is that we have to create another commission on that.
Well.
I don't think we have to have a commission.
We just call it marijuana czar.
At the end of, we're, we're pouring howl and liaison from the marijuana.
You know, in a while, we would talk about stuff and Rusty would bring up stuff that he had talked to his friends out there.
Yeah.
And they were doing this and doing that. And it just would be something that maybe.
Maybe you should just develop new hobbies.
That's a substantial difference.
That's right.
You know, I, like, I think it would be nice for council to know at some point. You know, like, how much cultivation is going on? I mean, there are a lot of, right. But I would kind of give him like assignments on, right? Like, you might want to know how much outdoor cultivation is gonna be, how much you do. So like, he would be reporting to you on the marijuana industry. I, I guess I'm just trying to follow up on that thought.
Wouldn't the state have that information?
They do, but I just think it's something that we, we don't talk about very often. Right? It just doesn't come up.
Well, he, right, he had, he had it in a really distilled fashion firsthand.
Yeah, he, he went out and talked to, he knows most of the people out there. And I'm just, I don't think it's something that, you know, it's definitely deep, but I think it would be good for us, for the marijuana industry, especially the way things are really slowing up down and maybe bring some stuff in or help them, you know, just kind of keep an update on it.
Right.
And I think the biggest thing would be to ask him if he'd do it. I don't know if he would do it. He may not be interested. And I kind of thought that would be good.
Ask him if he would be ambassador.
That would kind of dovetail with something that Councilman Williamson's been talking about for a while and see if we could get some kind of consultant information about how we use where we are as a marijuana city, selling city, to go forward, but not to just let it die, but to make it a more useful economic development tool for us. And that was the only thing I was gonna say is that I can't remember the last time we had a report on where we are on the economic development front in Trinidad. Because I, I'd really like to know, are we, are we out there trying to get new businesses in here, new employers? And I don't know if you answered the question.
Thank you for mentioning that, Councilman Oglestry. I was, I was actually gonna mention that myself. I'm trying not to use a lot of words. I really do think that we would, we would have missed the boat in some fashion if we don't put together a task force, a commission, like you said, where we go something that would use some money in a very real way. And I don't even know who would have the expertise to do this. I think, Mike, you mentioned some school that has done obscure studying in the past. But I think we really should look at trying to future cast and determine what hurdles will be in the way of, of when, you know, it's, it's legal interstate wise, wise. Because we really, I think, could have the foundation to be like the Napa Valley of the marijuana situation. I mean, that's, that's my understanding, at least. I really do think that it'd be better to strike now and then after, you know, instead of after wishing we had, I think it's a sentiment running quite through the, the council, I think. It'd be beneficial. And we have a big engine in place. Let's use that engine. Let's try and move forward through the legalization of other states. Instead of boom and bust, it would be boom and continue to boom, I think.
You know, one of the things that, as a matter of fact, Aaron and I had this discussion at breakfast the other morning. We did? We had this discussion the other day about, about staple, I guess you'd call it staple businesses for our community. Our economic development and planning. Are they really looking at not only the codes and all this other stuff that we're dealing with, but we need to be able to reach out to some of these and begin to try to look and try to find other staple businesses, clothing store for women, shoe stores, what other type of, maybe another grocery store if necessary. Because that's one thing that I've heard quite a bit of from, from locals. And I really believe that if this community is going to grow, we're going to have the broadband, but you also need to have those staple services available to these people when we move here. Sure, they're going to maybe want to travel to Lower Springs or wherever periodically. But if you're going to keep them, want to really want to have them seriously consider Trinidad, we need to have those staple businesses so that it will, while they, while they live here, while they're living here on a day-to-day basis, they're growing that tax base for us and our, our local economy.
But you know what, Eric? That's tricky. Because even retail now, post-pandemic, is different.
Yes, it is.
You go up to the big metro areas, the big shopping centers are like ghost towns now.
Well, I'm talking, I'm talking about like a good clothing store for me. I'm talking about a furniture store. You can't buy furniture.
You don't like my clothes?
No.
Even something like, like natural groceries or something like that.
Oh, yeah. See, that's what I'm talking about, your staple businesses for that. You need to be able to go to on a daily basis.
And young people, younger people than us that are coming in, their, their spending habits are different than what ours were when we were that age. You know, we're collect, 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 buy, buy, buy on what that's mean. But now it's just, just the opposite. It's minimalization.
Sustain.
Yeah.
So I, I said, we, we focus on growth of our community and how that growth is going to occur. What do we need to put in place to grow this community and to not only grow, but to retain what we have now? So I really think that that's really the emphasis of where we as council, that's our concentration. That's what has to. Anything else, guys? No, I'll just. Well, that's the end of our discussion for tonight. Thank everyone for being here. And now six forty-five, school? That's a good workday. Would you like that? We're all pretty excited. That was what, gee, six, seven, twelve. But twenty-five, 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 all the games.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't know that. Yeah, I heard that.
Wow.
Three of them won by, three of them won by Phil.
Yeah.
And they won by.
Right.
Such a. Before this weekend, I felt guilty.